Thank you, everyone, for attending and for those who are watching remotely or have a video stream later on. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the second installment of the new virtual web series called North Penn Finance Committee Meetings, or a weekly event, apparently. We're going to start this week with the pledge of allegiance, so everybody rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the April 6, 2020 Finance Committee meeting?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Casa, seconded by, I think that was Tina Stoll. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. All right, we move on to, well, the comments, we do have some folks that may want to speak, we'll find out in a minute. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania sunshine law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To ensure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee, we may need to update this virtual, come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience's logbook. Clearly, you can't do that tonight, folks. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board. The committee chair may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Mr. Gilmer, if you have anybody who's ready? We are ready.
All right, so from our folks watching at home in the Zoom room, if you would like to ask a question, please use the raise your hand feature on the software. Once you raise your hand, I'll be able to unmute your mic and then you can ask your question. Okay, Mr. Fusco, I don't see any hands being raised. We could probably give it just a few more seconds, but it looks like there are no questions at this time. There is a public comment at the end as well, I believe. Is that accurate?
Yes, we have a couple of comment at the end, if there's anything you wish to provide feedback on. Maybe, I'm just putting this out there, we could put into the public content portion of this, revise something that says about raising your hand in the chatroom instead of coming to the podium or whatever. Okay, we're going to move on then to, we have no items for recommended for work session tonight, just a few informational items, and we're going to start with the NAP Elementary School bids and the results.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. So, NAP Elementary School bids were due today at 1:00 at the ESC, and we had contractors to maintain our social distancing. We had contractors drop off the bids outside on a table, and Tom Schneider was waiting inside the ESC lobby where he gathered the packages from the table and then did a date and timestamp on them by 1:00. We actually opened the bids and virtually on a Zoom meeting at 3:00 today. And Kristen, if you could bring up, please, the bid tabulation. We have two, if you could bring up the other one first, please. We have the bid tabulation from today's meeting. And Mr. Schneider, you're on the call, correct? Bobby, you might need to open his mic up, I believe he is on the Zoom meeting.
I'm here, Steve.
Tom, if you, okay, great. So, Tom and I are going to tag team this. We have, this page that's on the screen now is our detailed bid tabulation. The yellow coding represents the apparent low bidder and our recommended alternate that we're recommending to the board for Thursday night. So, Thursday night, we have an item on the agenda, we will populate it with the various contractors now. Thursday night is the notice of intent to award the bids. In May, at the May action meeting, we'd actually have the awarding of the bids and issuing the contract to the contractors at that point in time. So, let's just step through each of the prime contracts. There were five prime contracts. So, the first one is general construction. That's the first one in the upper left, contract number one, general construction. We did only have one bidder for general construction, that was Lowbar. And since they were the only bidder, they are the low bid, the low bidder, the apparent low bidder. The good news here is even though we only had one bidder, we have worked with Lowbar on a number of projects in the past here at North Penn School District, and we are quite pleased with their work. So, that's the first piece of good news. The second piece of good news is even with one bidder, they were still $700,000 below the estimate for the general contractor. So, we're actually quite pleased with this.
Mr. Scrucky?
Yes?
I don't know if you can hear me, if it's mute, am I clear or not?
No, I can hear you fine, thank you.
And I understand, Mr. Scrucky, that you have a history, a good history with this particular contractor. My experience has been, though, that when there has been just one bid, regardless of whether or not it's been a positive experience or not, that's not necessarily a really healthy way or to proceed from a physical perspective. Will there be any additional reviews done by you and Mr. Schneider regarding the details of their bid?
Well, absolutely, that's part of the due diligence process. That's a regular occurrence that occurs. And a lot of that is going to occur between tonight and Thursday night. And we are not concerned about only having one contractor under those two circumstances I just mentioned.
Right.
If their bid was $700,000 over the estimate, we would be certainly more concerned.
Different story, different story.
Right, right. But now, that's part of the due diligence to make sure everything is in order with their proposal. And that way, on Thursday night, when we have their name on the agenda, you can be assured that, we are confident that they are the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, so, again, I want to be supportive, and I am supportive, and I don't know the history with this particular contractor. Based upon my experience working with contractors for a number of years, I was always very, kind of, the flag went up when there was only one. So, I'm just putting it out there that I would like personally to look at the detailed contract to understand, you know, the schedule, to understand, to understand change orders and their oversight, their organizational structure, and communication timely with all of the subs that they'll have working for them.
Okay, Tom, could you cover alternate number 16, which we're recommending to the board?
Absolutely. Alternate number 16 was an ad alternate for HVAC screens, which would go around the equipment on the new addition. The new addition is at the front of the building, it will have rooftop equipment on it. And we put that as an ad alternate to select it if we had the funds available. And with this, with the GC coming in below budget, we would like to recommend that alternate because it will give the building a better appearance without seeing the HVAC equipment on the first-story roofs.
Mr. Schneider, that sounds all good. Again, I don't want to be a speed bump. Again, I just want to bring to the table my experience with what I've encountered, all the crazy learnings I've had, all the mistakes I've made, and just want to make sure that with everything else that's going on in the district, in the world, that we are as prudent as possible. And again, looking at it a bit more detailed, a bit more granular, and respecting everyone in the district's experience with this contractor. But everyone is stretched a little bit, and I just want us to take care with that.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to contract number two, the plumbing contractor. The apparent low bidder is Miko Mechanical. At $1.674 million, we are not recommending any alternates in this particular case. Questions on contract number two? Okay, number three is mechanical, that is also Miko. And they're the apparent low bidder, and that amount is $3,877,000. And we are recommending the alternate for the CM3 controls. That was no additional cost. So, Mr. Schneider, could you just talk about the CM3 controls briefly?
Yes. It was decided to bid the automatic temperature controls for the HVAC equipment as an alternate and provide three separate control companies to provide competitive bidding against each other. Miko Mechanical embedded the CM3 controls in their base bid. As you can see, their base bid is a little bit higher than the two lowest, but because of the alternate number 10Bs, CM3 controls being $0, they ultimately become the lowest bidder. We have CM3 controls in Montgomery Elementary School. The remainder of the district is Siemens, our HVAC crew, they like the CM3 controls. So, it gives us an alternative beyond just Siemens. In the past, Siemens was flat spec, and that really isn't the most prudent way to get the best pricing, the flat-spec controls. So, as you can see, we provided three alternatives and selected the CM3 controls.
Hi, this is Kathy again. So, a couple of things. With Miko receiving, or winning contracts two and three, what is your experience with their expertise there in terms of mechanical, HVAC, electrical, all of that?
They're not doing any electrical, but they're just mechanical and plumbing. I've worked with them on five or six projects. And they are one of the largest mechanical contractors in the area doing public schoolwork right now. They have approximately 180 mechanics in their employ. And they are actually, right now, they were the low bidder for the Gwinnett Square Chiller and also the Pembroke HVAC, Library HVAC projects, the two small summer projects.
Sounds good, Mr. Schneider. One other thing regarding CM3 and Siemens, my experience where I was before was that the challenge was that when troubleshooting had to happen, there were not certified, let's say, troubleshooters, technicians to come out to dispute. So, in terms of startup, those pieces, is that, again, I didn't read the contract in detail, is that part of the, let's say, after the substantial completion, final completion, they will be on board with, you know, trained experts with this?
Well, yes, and part of, the contract does not include a service contract beyond installation. It does include a two-year warranty, but it does not include service contracts. We are in talks right now with CM3 about having a service contract on Montgomery Elementary School because at this point, we don't have a service contract.
Okay, I think that needs to happen. Because it's brand new, and then you're, you know, obviously based upon your recommendation about who should be trained internally, and then a contract with them, there we actually get the benefit of someone in the district being trained in this. So, we don't always have to be held hostage and waiting if there's a problem.
Correct, correct. And they've been very responsive since Montgomery was closed down. They have been responsive with any concerns, and they've assisted us throughout the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you. That would be something I'd be interested in seeing. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to contract number four, the electrical contract. Cedar Electric is the apparent low bidder, $3,396,000 even. We are recommending a deduct alternate for the Edwards Fire Alarm. Mr. Schneider, could you cover what the deduct alternate entails?
Yes, in the specifications, the fire alarm system that's existing in the building is a Simplex Fire Alarm System, which is currently owned by JCI Johnson Controls. So, in the specifications, we had JCI as the fire alarm system. We provided these alternates as a cost-saving feature for Edwards and Siemens. And we have all three of those systems throughout the district. We have Siemens, Edwards, and Simplex throughout the district. So, taking the Edwards system, we're very confident with the system, and it's a reduction in the price of $20,000.
Okay, and finally, for the asbestos abatement, Newber is the apparent low bidder for $216,000. So, Kristen, could you bring up the other, the summary page, please? Okay, so here are the apparent low bidders, the various contracts, and the total bid award amount entailing a total of $22,413,000 even, which is $1,060,526 below, below the estimates. That's 4.52% below the estimates, and we are quite pleased with the results. I think all of us on the design team, the construction team, were quite concerned with the way these bids would turn out with what is happening with the shutdown of the construction trade in Pennsylvania in particular. We were hearing from various contractors difficulty obtaining pricing information from their subcontractors, and perhaps that's the large reason why we only have one general contractor that submitted a proposal. But nonetheless, at the end of the day, to have bid results that are under budget in the climate that we're in right now, we are very, very pleased with these results. And assuming the paperwork is all in order, we were prepared then on Thursday night for the board to, or ask the board, request the board approve the intent to award these bids.
Mr. Scrucky and Mr. Schneider, I, under the circumstances, I don't even know what they were with the present financial situation and just all the issues you had to encounter, thank you so much for everything that you did. And again, you know, I'm going to step back and say to you all, you know, I lived the life of low bid, and it was difficult at that. And I wanted to make sure that the relationships that you have with the contractors, general and specific discipline are healthy. But at the same time, we all know they are low bid. And I want to be real tight about the change orders. I am concerned, I want to go on the record, I am concerned there was only one contractor, general contractor that bid. I'm very pleased that you have a good working relationship, and they're fair and reasonable. That goes a long way. But at the end of the day, our responsibility is to the taxpayers, and I want to make sure that all of these contracts, the general as well as the specific disciplines, represent everyone, and we are very physically responsible. And that, I'll go off my soapbox. The other thing was about the, and again, I'm speaking just because I've gotten messed up with asbestos removal before, and the contractor, I guess it was, and I'm sorry, Mr. Schneider, it was something environment, Newber?
Newber?
$216,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what I want to make sure is that for, and I ran into this, maybe you have, and you're going to say it's fine, Kathy. I ran into where we've hired the low bid for asbestos removal, but they, that particular company did not have rights to go to the correct landfill, which ended up costing the company I was with at the time additional money because we had to take additional samples, additional trucks, loading, all of that. And we ended up spending probably close to another half million dollars on that. So, I just want to make sure that the company that we have has the right to disposal at the appropriate landfill. Some of them don't.
Yes, I've worked with Newber in the past. They're a very reputable and large environmental and demolition contractor. So, they do not only environmental work, but also demolition. Newber Environmental is a large company. They're not a, you know, a one-truck type of a company. So, this contract also is a unit-price contract. So, the risk of having problems with it are less because we have fixed prices for every pipe fitting and every length of pipe insulation on the project.
Do you have cubic yards in there? Have you defined it by weight or cubic yard, how much we'll pay? And then over that is an additional amount of money?
No, everything is a unit price. So, every pipe fitting, we have a price for every pipe fitting, every length of pipe insulation. We have square footage of carpet removal, mastic removal, VAT removal, soil, asbestos-containing soil, linear feet of caulk, fire doors. Everything's broken out at a unit price, and that's in the contract, each of the unit prices.
Okay, so, again, I mean, the other contracts are huge too, and I'm not trying to beat this with a dead horse, but Prism came in at like almost $500,000. This is like $220,000.
Mm-hmm, correct.
What do they know? What does this environmental company know versus Prism? I don't get it, unless they didn't want the bid.
Well, no, they're a reputable firm. Their pricing is in line. If you look at other bidders, yes, you'll get bids that are 20%, 30% high. And that's, fortunately, you get the low bidders also. So, if you look at Sargent, Sargent's right in the same ballpark.
232, yeah, they were good too. It's just that environmental, particularly asbestos, is such a, you know, a crafty. And when you think of, I mean, you say, okay, what's $300,000 on a $20 million project? You're right. But at the end of the day, if this is something we can go after now, I just want to pay attention.
Right, and we've done an extensive review of the building, and certainly we'll be running into asbestos when we do demolition beyond what we anticipate. But that habit has a unit price. It's not a fixed price. It's not like the other contracts that are a fixed price, low bid. This is a unit price, they'll get paid for what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. I'm sure it was really difficult, and I just want to ask the questions for, you know, people in the district.
No problem.
When I look at these, when I look at these contracts, and I looked at what we saved in financing by doing this project now over doing this project half of a year ago and signing the contracts a half of a year ago, it seems to me that we saved about 5% on doing the project now over doing the project six months ago. And I think that is due to the economy and low interest rates. And based on that, if we would move ahead quicker with the high school project, I think we could save tens of millions of dollars by doing the high school project quicker. What do you think, Mr. Scrucky?
I think we can start that conversation at the next Facilities and Operations Committee.
Yeah.
Is that, the ninth-grade building hasn't even been designed. In fact, we don't even have a contract with the architect. So, I don't think I'm in a position right now to speculate about what those costs would be. Design would be at least a year for that project. And a lot can change between now and a year from now, which we'll sort of talk about that when we get into the fiscal projections in a little bit.
Thank you. Jeff Fusco, I have a, well, two questions.
Absolutely.
So, very diverse questions, I'll keep it concise. Mr. Scrucky, based on that question from Mr. Rush, building on that, I would just like you to make sure, for those in the public that view this or are watching now, please just give an update as to how this is money already in hand in a project based on mandates, how this is already in place, and what that means to the public when they're wondering how we're going forth with such a large spend at this time of fiscal uncertainty going forward.
Absolutely, great question. So, the NAP Elementary School project has been in the pipeline now for a couple of years, and we actually started borrowing for the project back in 2018. We did a $10 million borrowing in 2018. We did another $10 million borrowing in 2019. Both were bank-qualified debt issuances. Because when you keep a debt issuance under $10 million in one calendar year, you get preferential rates. So, we did do $10 million each year in 18 and 19. And the way, it's really kind of strange, the way interest rates took a dive in the earlier part of the year, and in the past month in particular, we actually were able to do refinancing of that debt already to save the taxpayers approximately $400,000 on that debt that was just issued in 2018 and 19. Now, we will need a third borrowing for the project because when you include the soft cost, these contracts here are what are referred to as the hard cost. The soft costs include things like the architect's fee and permitting and things like that, furniture and fixtures and equipment for the building. When you factor all that in, we will need a third borrowing. It'll be less than $10 million. We're anticipating that will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $7 to $8 million. That can occur in 2020, could occur in 2021. Whenever market conditions are right, we can move forward with that third borrowing. And that'll make us complete, we'll have the entire amount of money we need for the project. But 20 out of the approximate $28 million project is already borrowed, and we have that money that we're investing now.
Thank you for that overview. It's been a long history and something that the community has long waited for. And though these are difficult times, thank the administration, Mr. Scrucky, you and your team for making sure that our fiscal ship, so to speak, is in as sound shape as it can be headed into these uncharted waters. So, down to $70,000, a lot less money, but a question to alternative 16. Just a brief follow-up. So, is that simply aesthetic? Is there a safety benefit to having that screen as well? I just want some clarification.
It is mostly aesthetic. The equipment is located in the center of the roof, and there is some, the equipment and ductwork would be seen from the entryway, the main entrance, and also the parent drop-off on the other side. So, and it will be seen from that roof. So, it is an aesthetic feature.
Well, understood, when we do something, we need to do it right. Understand that option is occurring because of these bids in total coming in, much less, what was that, roughly 4.5% Mr. Scrucky, from what we had budgeted? I was like, Mr. Scrucky, could you clarify, is, did the total budget was at 4.5% less than we had anticipated?
I'm sorry, yes, I needed to unmute my mic. Yes, it was 4.52% less than the estimate, slightly over $1 million less than the estimate.
All right. Thank you, thanks for those clarifications.
And I'd also like to thank our entire team that worked on this project, including the Schrader Group, ICS, our construction management firm, all the other professionals that were involved, Mr. Schneider and our internal team. Because a couple of weeks ago, we weren't sure that this project would be able to open up bids. We actually delayed the opening of the bids two times. And as you know, with the circumstances in the country and the state right now, we weren't sure we were going to be able to actually receive an open bid. So, we feel very fortunate that we were able to have the bid opening today. And then we are all ecstatic on the team, the fact that we did come in over $1 million under the budget. So, a lot of, a lot has transpired in the past couple of weeks, but we're really fortunate, I think, to be in the position we're in right now. So, again, our recommendation, we will have this on the action meeting agenda. Actually, we have it on now. The only thing we need to do is populate the bid opening results. And we'll do that later this evening with the two exhibits that you've seen tonight. So, we thank you for the discussion, and we can have more discussion Thursday. We'll be in a position on Thursday then too to verify that the proposals have been thoroughly vetted and that we are comfortable in recommending the lowest responsible bidders.
Mr. Scrucky, again, thank you, thank you. Again, with all of the layering of all the challenges that your team has had to deal with. Before we get to Thursday, candidly, I mean, I think it's wonderful that the bid came in much lower. I mean, I'm going to put it out there, I have a very big concern that there's only one bidder for the general contractor, but I mean, I'm completely confident in what you're saying. But I will let you know that that is a concern to me. So, before we get to Thursday, maybe we can talk tomorrow regarding exactly what the parameters are that you're looking for. So, you feel, you know, obviously you feel confident now, but completely confident bringing to the board this is the direction we should go. I mean, I think with everything else that the districts got going on, the state, everything else, we, you know, I see North Penn as being the leader. I know, I know, Tina has communicated, a lot of other districts are doing additional construction, they're moving forward with their project. But, you know, selfishly, you know, I'm very competitive. I want us to be the best. But, you know, selfishly, I, you know, I'm, I'm very competitive, I want us to be the best physically, um, schedule-wise, like change order-wise, all of those pieces. And this is a great team and I'm like, okay, I don't want to, I want to be, I don't want to be a speedster, but I want to ask the smart questions, so we are the best.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley, um, yeah, and, and I feel a lot of confidence in this bid, I mean, to be honest, whether it was one contractor or four, we have to go with the lowest anyway. I'm feeling very confident that you have a history, we have a history with, um, those who were awarded the contracts and that you feel good. I think that the team is to be commended, I think it's great that we're coming in a million dollars under. Um, so thank you for all that work, everyone involved. Alright, we're gonna move on to the budget update and the financial projections.
Okay, thank you very much, so Kristen will bring up a new presentation. So, uh, just want to give an update, we're actually now, the fact that we're in April, there's really not much time left between now and the proposed final budget adoption and typically once we get into May for the proposed final budget adoption, we have a pretty good idea where we're going to be with respect to things such as personnel, with respect to the tax rate, with respect to utilizing any exceptions or not, so. Kristen, if you could advance just a, a quick summary again of what remains with respect to our budget timeline for the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year. We do have another finance committee meeting on May the fourth and that will be our last finance committee meeting prior to the proposed final budget adoption, so. We certainly like to walk away from that meeting on May fourth, knowing the board's direction on the tax rate and tied into that, of course, then is the use of any or all of the special education exception. Because we need to prepare all of the appropriate state documents that need to be available for a public inspection and we need to have those ready for the May twelfth meeting. So May twelfth, we have another finance committee meeting and then after the finance committee meeting, we have a board work session. So at that work session then, we'll be asking for your consideration to approve the proposed final budget. And then at the regular board action meeting on June eighteenth would be the adoption of the final budget. And the fiscal year then, of course, starts in July. So just a note about the state's budget, I think we talked about this last Monday, there's been some speculation that the state's budget might be split into two this coming year, two six-month budgets and that, I, I've heard that rumor again from PASBO, the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, as recent as one thirty this afternoon, uh, but they did state that there's nothing in the pipeline that would change anything with respect to the school district's budget timeline, so we're still going to plow forward with our budget. Uh, perhaps something changes, but right now, the best information we have is we're going to be on our normal budget cycle. So just a, a quick reminder, the Act One Index for next year is two point six percent. That's the maximum tax rate that would be permitted absent use of any exceptions, but we did have one exception. And that was the special education exception, which was approved for slightly over one point five million dollars. If the special education exception was used, that would permit an additional point eight four percent. Again, you could choose to use zero percent of that exception or all point eight four or anywhere in between. If all point eight four, the special ed exception was used, the maximum allowable tax increase for North Penn next year would be three point four three percent. So again, some of the deficit numbers we're talking about tonight assume a zero percent increase and then we'll talk about the, uh, the tax impact at various tax levels, how much additional revenue that generates, but at zero percent, we have updated numbers from last Monday, you're now looking at a thirteen point one million dollar deficit, that's down one point three million. And I'll explain why, that's really one line item, that's the only thing that has changed from last Monday to tonight. One point, a thirteen point one million dollar deficit at the present time. So a, again, the board cannot raise taxes to this level, but just for curiosity's sake, that would require a seven point zero six percent tax increase to balance our budget with that thirteen million dollar deficit. So a couple of updates now since our discussion last week, first off, we did lower next year's budget by pre-purchasing an item, that's the Chromebooks, we had three thousand five hundred Chromebooks for grades seven to nine in next year's budget, we're basically moving that to this year's budget using budgetary reserve. That allows us to lower next year's budget by that dollar amount. So we felt comfortable doing that, it's a strategy that we've used in prior years by taking advantage of some unspent funds this year, plus the budgetary reserve. Um, so again, it's just a matter of shifting that purchase from one fiscal year to the next, doesn't have any impact on our fund balance at the end of the day, but it does provide some relief as we're preparing for the budget. We've also identified some additional purchases that we might be able to pull out of the two thousand twenty-one budget and purchase those items this year. The second thing I wanted to provide an update on deals with the tax rebate program, we had a question for discussion last week with respect to the rebate program and the question was, can the program be expanded to include other classifications of individuals beyond what we have now? And as a reminder, uh, the classifications that we have now are one hundred percent in sync with the Pennsylvania property tax and rent rebate program, it's individuals over age sixty-five, it's widow or widowers over the age of fifty and it's also those individuals that are disabled, we don't deviate from what the state has in place, so the question was, well, could we expand the program to include individuals that perhaps may be unemployed as a result of the statewide shutdown or perhaps lost a, a, a job, uh, and, you know, won't get that job back because of the shutdown, it was something more than just temporary. Uh, or a different classification, uh, whatever the reason might be, other reasons for inability to pay the property tax. And I did have a discussion with our solicitor, Mr. Summers, last Tuesday about this very subject. And as I suspected and kind of alluded to last week, that that would be, uh, a violation of the Pennsylvania Constitution with respect to uniformity of taxation. The only reason we're able to provide the level of rebate that we have now is because it piggybacks one hundred percent on the state program. So it's almost like, okay, the state made an exception with the uniformity, so we piggyback on that, but it can't go beyond that. So we can enhance the rebate percentage, but we wouldn't be able to enhance the classification of those individuals that are eligible for the program. Okay, also wanted to provide an update on some of the federal stimulus money, also referred to as the CARE Act funding. Uh, we were provided with an estimate last week and I do have to stress that this is an estimate. Uh, the estimate is based on the school district's Title One percent that we receive relative to others in the state. So assuming the money is, uh, is distributed in the same proportion, North Penn would receive nine hundred eighty-two thousand four hundred twelve dollars next year and wouldn't need to be spent next fiscal year. Uh, we do not have any of that money included in the budget yet, that might change because there are still a number of questions out there regarding the money. The money would be distributed by the state, we know that, one thing we don't know is, is will it be the nine hundred eighty-two thousand or some portion thereof? Will it be a flat distribution or will it be some sort of grant application process? We don't know that. We know there are some general prescribed guidelines for use, most of those pertain to the shutdown. Any kind of spending that was relative to the shutdown. But the key question in my mind is, you know, again, the, the rumor mill that we are hearing that there's a potential that the state will use that money to help fill in some of the state budget shortfalls. So let's say the state cuts our basic ed and special ed subsidy for next year. You know, the, the, the recent rumor was that the CARES money then would be used to fill in that gap. So the potential is that North Penn, our basic ed and special ed subsidies might be cut by eight hundred ninety-two thousand and then we receive nine hundred eighty-two thousand as part of the CARES funding, leaving us no better off than where we're at right now. Hence the reason why we don't have it included in the budget right now, we really want to get more information, uh, the stories evolve every day and we're hopeful to have more guidance on this prior to the proposed final budget, but right now, uh, that's the best information we can provide. Uh, we do have an estimate, we don't know how the money's going to be distributed, uh, nor do we know if it's going to be impacted by any cuts in our state funding. Uh, that's also something that's been talked about quite a bit, uh, that most districts right now are budgeting either no increase in state funding or an outright cut in their state funding for basic ed and special ed. We still have the increases that were part of Governor Wolf's proposal in February in the budget. Uh, however, if that money gets cut out of the budget, that's about three hundred fifty thousand dollars between special ed and basic ed that will need to come out of the budget. Uh, some districts are actually budgeting a reduction in basic ed and special ed, taking the numbers back to the two thousand eighteen, nineteen levels. So it varies from district to district, I'm at the position that let's just leave what we have in, in for now until we get more information. Um, I would suspect we will have more information on this when we get to the proposed final budget in May.
As Steve indicated, we have some history with, um, federal stimulus money being part of a, I'll call it a shell game, back when Governor Corbett was in office and, uh, you know, there were some, to me, I felt was less than forthright way of distributing the money and including that as a part of the state subsidy, but really it was federal stimulus money that got passed through. And hopefully there was, you know, there were some lessons learned through that because I would not like to see a repeat of the way that was handled in the past.
And we're hearing from PASBO that the, the CARES money that's being distributed to K-12 institution is actually less than that money that Dr. Dietrich just referred to back from the, it was called the ARA, A-R-A, stimulus funds that came circa two thousand ten, so this money is even less than that money that was distributed back in two thousand ten. Okay, just a quick reminder, our total fund balance, and this is important because these are our starting numbers when we look at our multi-year, ten-year projections coming up in a minute, our total fund balance is rounded off and called forty-one million dollars in various components. So I want to talk about the methodology that we use for our ten-year projections and uh, as we were looking at the projections, we felt that it really boiled down to the type of economic recovery that might happen here over the next year, two years, three years, longer, who knows? Uh, but we tried to use our best educated guess on the type of the economic recovery and base the assumptions on that and we didn't want to overwhelm you with too many scenarios because I think we had, as we were doing these projections, it might have been last year or the year before, we ended up with fifteen iterations and that's pretty overwhelming to look at in one night. So what we're looking at, we're going to look at tonight are basically seven iterations. So we have, one iteration will be the projections that we did just a month ago before the whole, whole COVID shutdown occurred, which kind of turned the economy completely upside down. So we did have a ten-year projection that we had ready prior to the economic downturn, so we're going to share that. Um, also, I think it's important to note that in these projections, we still have included some of the debt service modeling that PFM did for us for future projects, specifically a ninth grade project, high school renovation and something at Pendale. Or Pendale slash middle schools, so that's included in the numbers, we did include that debt in there, so that's, that's an important note. But next slide will show you the three types of scenarios that we're going to look at, there's really three types of economic recoveries. One is called a V-shaped recovery. And as you can see, the left side of the V is that you're at your peak and you sharply go down to a trough and you sharply recover back to where you were before. And that recovery can be, uh, a one-year scenario. And on our V-shaped projections, we're going to assume that we have a one-year economic downturn and things pretty much return to the where they were before that downturn, not all areas, but most areas return to where we are, were back in February, let's say, when we were living, uh, the dream with ten years of economic expansion. The second type of economic recovery is a U-shaped recovery. So again, you have a sharp downturn in a U-shaped situation, but you have a more spread-out trough. That trough could be two years, three years, five years, no one knows the exact amount, but it's more sustained, that economic downturn is more sustained than a V-shaped recovery, but when the economy does recover, it's pretty dramatic and swift the same way. Uh, the projections that we'll talk about for the U-shaped recovery assumes a two-year trough. And again, we could, we could speculate what that trough is and we could alter the projections for a future meeting, we can make it three years, four years, five years. But whatever that assumption is, it has a dramatic impact on what the recovery looks like and what our projections look like. Third recovery, which we, we did not address, is something that the country of Greece has, has been experiencing since the mid-two thousands. That's, that's an L-shaped situation, and that's basically when your economy doesn't ever recover. You basically stay in that economic recession or depression for a sustained period of time. So you flatten out, you, you flatline and you stay there and it doesn't improve and that could be years, again, in Greece's case, it's been twelve years or more where they've had economic contraction. Uh, so we did not address that particular situation because quite frankly, I don't think that's a, a scenario that's has much of a probability here in the United States, I could be wrong, anybody could be wrong, but uh, we did not address that in our scenario, so let's go through what the U and the V specifically mean. So for each of the U and the V, we assume a, three different types of scenarios. The one scenario is a zero percent tax increase for next year, we discussed this last week, I think it's important to note and I think, Mr. Casa, you brought this up last week about the future year impacts, that if you have one year with no tax increase, it doesn't just affect one year, it affects every year thereafter. It has a compounding effect, and when we show the charts in a minute, you can really see that dramatic effect it has in the next five years in particular. The second scenario we used both for the U-shape and V-shaped recovery was an Act One tax increase every year, starting next year. So we made some assumptions with the Act One Index, we actually lowered those assumptions based on the IFO's numbers. Uh, but we do assume an Act One tax increase every year, and the third scenario, under each of the U and the V scenarios, uh, we factored in a special education exception for two thousand twenty-one, up to the full amount, and then assumed Act One thereafter, so. That also shows you the dramatic effect, the compounding of taking an exception just one year, what that has on future years. So I'd like to talk about some of the, the quick assumptions now in the V projection analysis. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we are going to assume a sharp recovery after one year, I'm pretty much getting back to that, that normal situation, if you will, back to the February numbers that we were looking at in the economy, strong growth in, in real estate, strong growth in earned income tax, strong growth in real wages, uh, still relatively low inflation, low interest rates. I think this V-shaped projection, uh, projection analysis is very optimistic, assuming a one-year recovery. Uh, in my view, that has a, a fairly low probability, but if you poll a hundred economists, you know, you'll probably get a hundred different answers. No one knows exactly where it's going to be, but for our projections, we're assuming basically a one-year recession.
Mr. Scrocky, so back to that very optimistic, so when you look at it, are you looking at this as very optimistic based upon the school district or, um, a county or a state or federal?
It's actually all interconnected, it's all interconnected. So what impacts, the federal level, the federal economy, the nationwide economy, no question impacts the state economy, which no question impacts the local economy, which no question impacts the school district's budget situation. So again, if I had to assign a probability of a sharp recovery in one year, again, I'm not a Harvard economist, but I would say maybe that's like thirty percent probability that we might see this particular scenario.
In our school district.
For, for North Penn, right, so this V-shaped recovery is making assumptions then for North Penn, the actual impact it has in North Penn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So let's talk about some specifics here at North Penn. So with this V-shaped situation, I am, uh, projecting a reduction in our tax base for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, and so you might ask yourself, well, how can our tax base go backwards? Uh, new properties get added on to our rolls, businesses expand, there's new construction, how can it go backwards? Well, we've lived this before, we did have pretty dramatic contraction of our tax base in the last recession and that is due to assessment appeals filed by in particular, commercial property owners. And we already hear that property owners, commercial property owners are lining up to file appeals now already. Uh, the appeals get filed by August and then the appeals are heard and then any changes or reductions occur in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. So I mentioned last week that So I mentioned last week that my bigger concern is not the 2021 fiscal year, although I'm very concerned about that. I'm more concerned right now about the 21, 22 fiscal year. We could see a reduction in our tax base based on these assessment appeals. And it's virtually guaranteed that commercial property owners are going to file appeals in Ernst for the 21, 22 fiscal year. Also, for the 21, 22 fiscal year, we included a reduction in the property tax collection rate. We talked about this last week. We lowered it to 96.8% collection as opposed to 97%. That would be for the 21, 22 year only. We don't, we didn't change the 20, 21 collection rate yet. We still may do that. But we did lower the collection rate and that, that does reduce our overall tax collection between four and five, between four and $500,000 a year. Also, for that one year, we projected no growth whatsoever in our earned income tax and transfer tax. On a call with business managers this morning, I heard some districts are actually going to lower their earned income tax by 10% for next year. A 10% reduction in North Penn's earned income tax would be $1.7 million. So we're projecting no growth in this assumption. And then basically near zero interest rate, not just for a one-year period, but for a two-year period. Also, what we did then for the Act One index, we took the IFO projections and lowered them by 30 basis points for most years. The one year we lowered it by 50 basis points, but most years we lowered by 30 basis points. We think the IFO projections are too high. They were done pre-recession, pre-COVID, and we don't think they're valid anymore. I know some districts are lowering those estimates a lot further than we are. So again, these projections are still somewhat optimistic. We didn't change anything with the PISERS projections. We do have PISERS rates locked in for 2021. But PISERS also, they conduct a, a projection for the next six, seven years. We didn't tinker with those numbers, but I think it's safe to say that our share of retirement is going to go higher. But we didn't include those. So again, these assumptions are still optimistic. PISERS estimates a seven and a half percent return on their portfolio every year. And while they are well diversified, they don't have 100% exposure in equities. There's no question that they're not going to reach a seven and a half percent portfolio return for this fiscal year.
Steve, is it true that relative to 2008, PISERS has divested quite a bit from the market and relying more on contributions? So that they wouldn't have such tumult in a situation like this?
I, I think their asset allocation, Mr. Fusco, is actually fairly similar to was back in, in the last recession. And I can share a chart. I shared it with our business office about two weeks ago. It is very, very well diversified, but their asset allocation, something I follow in their annual report each year, really has not changed that much. They have exposure to a number of things. I think one of the things that really hit the asset allocation back in the last recession with PISERS that perhaps won't hit as hard this time is their exposure to real estate. They invest in REITs, R-E-I-Ts. They are real estate investment trusts. And that has, you know, they're basically investments in real estate, commercial real estate in particular. And so I think the real estate market had more of a downturn in the last recession than it will now. So, but the asset allocation really has not changed that much. Part of our assumption, both in the U shape and V shape, it does include reduced spending. In the V-shaped assumption, we include reduced spending for one year and the U shape, it's two years. So let's move on to the U now. Again, it's a two-year recovery, nearly returning to normal after two years. We think this likelihood and probability is higher than the V shape, but it still has a lot of optimism baked into it, things like, again, not tinkering with the PISERS rate is one. The tax base construction, contraction is over a two-year period now. So we're expecting the assessment appeals to occur over a longer period of time, a two-year period. And the same thing with our tax collection rate lowered to 96.8% for two years. And the growth in EIT, no growth for two years. Again, that might be optimistic because back in the last recession, we did see contraction in EIT. We did see some reductions. Here, under this model, we're projecting interest rates to stay near zero for a three-year period instead of a two-year period.
Mr. Scrocky, I mean, again, your crystal ball is different. So again, what do you think about V versus U versus, you know, near zero interest rates for three years?
I, I think if I had to pick between the U, V, or L, I would assign the greatest weight to U. I think the probability is higher for U than anything else. I would say this might be, I said 30% for V. Maybe I would say 60% for U and maybe 10% for L.
Okay.
But that's, that's my take on it. Somebody can look at the data and reach the exact opposite conclusion.
Absolutely. And I appreciate your opinion. Thank you.
And once we show the actual numbers, you know, we throw all this data and bake the data pie. And again, we can tinker with any one of these assumptions. If someone says, you know what, I, I like the U, but let's see what, what reduced tax question looks like for three years instead of two years. We can easily plug that in our spreadsheet. In fact, Kristen can bring it up. I think you have it live up, Chris, or can bring it up quickly. We can change any one of these variables. And yeah, there's a quick snapshot of it. We can change any one of these variables because there's a big spreadsheet. This is a summary spreadsheet you're looking at now. There's a big spreadsheet that feeds into this summary. We can change any one of the variables and instantaneously come up with new data. And we're not going to spend too much time on the individual numbers. We can change any one of them, but I, I think the story that we want to tell will be depicted once we get to the graphs. That tells a story. Sometimes when you see all the numbers in one chart, it's like, oh my gosh, I can't make sense out of this. The graphs tell the story and we'll get to that in a minute. Okay. Let's move on, Kristen. So again, on the U, we assumed a little more aggressive reduction in the Act One index. We use a 40 basis point reduction as opposed to 30 basis points. And I mentioned earlier, no change in the PISERS projection and our reduced spending was over a three-year period instead of, I'm sorry, it was over a two-year period instead of a three-year period. I'm sorry, it was over, it was over a two-year period instead of a one-year period for the V shape. Okay, so Kristen, let's migrate over to the charts now, please, and we'll get back into the budget scenario. So this is our, our first chart. This is our chart that illustrates our projections prior to COVID. So a couple of things I want to explain with the projections. This is all based on our preliminary budget, our preliminary budget that was approved by the board. It does include the new debt, as I mentioned earlier, and it includes end-of-year variances. We felt using the half percent variance, both on the revenue and expenditure side, was the most realistic way to project what the budget will look like at the end of the year. We felt that if we just used the budget amount, it just really wouldn't depict the reality that we experienced at the end of the year because we've been very fortunate over the past couple of years that we've had positive variances on the revenue and expenditure side. So we're going to assume those positive variances of a half percent continue in the future. So if we look at, I like just going right to the bottom line, and the bottom line isn't the bottom line, it's the third from the bottom. Because what's important to me is where's our fund balance going to be year after year after year? Where's our fund balance now? Where's it going to be 10 years from now? So if you look in the third line up from the bottom, Kristen, can you put your cursor on there? It says projected Y-E fund balance. Projected Y-E fund balance. Kristen just highlighted, it should show up in blue lettering. So with our current budget, we're projecting our fund balance at the end of the year. Remember, I said we have about a $41 million fund balance. So we're expecting to use roughly $4 million in fund balance when all is said and done with our current fiscal year. So we're projecting an ending fund balance this year of $36.7 million. 10 years from now, if we go to the third line up from the far right, that's the 2030, 31 budget. If you can believe that 10 years out, where would our fund balance have been with our preliminary budget? And this is assuming an Act One index, remember, the Act One index was higher under this scenario, it was the IFO numbers. But this assumes an Act One index year after year after year after year. Okay, if you follow that assumption, at the end of 10 years, the fund balance actually grows. It grows to $49 million. It's still less of a percent of our total expenditures than we have now, but in terms of gross dollars, it actually increases.
Steve, I'm sorry, and you probably said this, but does this presume any of the prospective borrowing we had discussed for high school or the ninth grade?
Yes, it does. It has all that baked in, yes. Yes, spreading out the debt over a very methodical approach so that that doesn't increase any more than the Act One index each year. So it does include it. So that looks like a pretty rosy picture, right? If I'm telling you that our fund balance, our starting fund balance in, in this fiscal year would be 36.7 and it grows to 49, you're probably feeling pretty good. I'm feeling pretty good about that. The only problem is the scenario is worthless now. That was the pre-COVID scenario and it, it doesn't mean anything anymore. The world has been turned upside down. The projections have been turned upside down. So we'll show this in the chart, but safe to say that this, this projection doesn't mean anything anymore. So the next chart. And we're going to go quickly over these and I'm going to get to the graphs. So we have, the, the title of this chart is the COVID-19 V-shape with variances with Act One increases every year. So what that means is the V-shaped recovery that I talked about and all those assumptions that go with it, assuming an Act One increase every year. The Act One index has been lowered by us by 30 basis points, as I mentioned, in most years. And this, again, the V shape, I'm putting a 30% probability on this V-shaped recovery. But let's take a look at what happened in the fund balance in this case. Again, our starting point, again, at the end of this fiscal year is $36.7 million. Now, instead of having the fund balance go up in 10 years, it goes down to 32.7. Still a pretty good fund balance, but now it's down to 8.72% of our total expenditures. It gives us basically a one-month surplus of total expenditures, a one-month surplus. So if the revenue siphon was shut off completely, we still had to pay bills, we would have a one-month surplus to continue to, to pay those bills. Now, in the middle of that chart, it does get a little hairy. We go from 36.7 million all the way down to 23.5. So that's, you know, shaving about $12 million, $13 million from our fund balance over a five-year period. That's concerning, but then things improved starting in 2027, going out to 2031. So this scenario, the V shape with an Act One index every year, that doesn't look so bad either.
Steve, would that kind of reduction in our fund balance over a short period, five years, affect our bond rating?
In my opinion, there's no question it would do. Yes, we have a double A, double A1 rating now. It would probably go to a double A2. That's not so bad either, but that will result in higher borrowing cost. So in our debt service model, that did not include higher borrowing costs due to a bond rating downgrade.
I'm sorry, Steve, did, Mr. Scrocky, did you say that it would affect our bond rating or not?
It would, in my opinion, yes. To get down to those levels, like if we take a look at 2025, our total fund balance would be 8% of our overall expenditures. So that's about, it would be about a $12 million reduction in our current fund balance. I don't think there's any question that that would result in a bond downgrade.
But, but do you think that, that the, the the valuation, the standardization of that would change across the board? So maybe it wouldn't be impactful to North Penn or not the case?
No, I, I think it would be impactful. Now, it's important to note that that downgrade wouldn't happen today or tomorrow or next year, or even for the third phase of the Nat borrowing. That would happen when we get to that point. So whatever borrowings are slated from 2025 on, it would affect those borrowings.
So let me ask a question. So if your expectation and your confidence that the bond rating would drop in those years, do you, could you provide your recommendations on changes and what we should do in terms of investment now? So that we do not, we can, for lack of a better term, lay low during those periods where you project that our bond rating would be lower?
Absolutely. And we'll talk about some of those when we get to the charts too, because once we see them, we can see certain things that, you know, from a pure fiscal perspective, certain things that we should probably be avoiding now to set ourselves up for a good situation for the future. So let's move on to the next slide, Kristen. Next slide is also a V-shaped recovery. Utilizing our end-of-year variances. Now, this is with no tax increase. Now, this is no tax increase just for one year. This would be no tax increase in the 2021 year. Last week, we talked about, you know, the possible legislative action requiring school districts to keep taxes at their current level for next year. So this is really impactful to share, I think, with anyone that brings up the possibility of freezing taxes next year and what impact that has on the school district long-term. So again, our starting point, third line up from the bottom is $36.7 million. But with that, even with the B-shaped recovery, which is optimistic, our fund balance is gone. In fact, we're in negative fund balance by the 25 fiscal year. We have negative fund balance. At the end of 10 years, we have a negative $30 million fund balance, which it just isn't, isn't possible to have a negative $30 million fund balance. But this shows you the ripple effect of not having any tax increase, what impact that has year after year after year.
And could you say it again, Steve, in terms of that one year of no tax increase?
That's one year, that's, that's no tax increase just for the 2021 fiscal year. And then Act One tax increases thereafter. It's just one year.
Mr. Scrocky, I'd just like to, to clarify for, you know, historical context. I remember stating, right, if not now, when, when we had voted to take the exception a couple of years ago. Now, what was the total amount of revenue that we added to the budget? Do you happen to recall? I, I'm thinking it was $1.7 million when, when we, we had the exception, but I don't know what the total revenue raised was out of that increase.
When we took the exception, the one year we did?
Yeah, what was it, 2.6 plus 1%?
Right, right. It wa, I, I think it was around $1.5 million, 1.4, 1.5 million in the special ed exception.
So I, I, well, I'm trying to provide some context for the board and the public, but also for myself is that, you know, even what, you know, what that would have meant now, here we are two years in, you know, let's look at this budget right now, it, it, that third line with the fund balance. And I'm trying to wrap my head around if we didn't have that Act One increase plus exception, how much money are we missing from the budget today if you take that out? Are you able to ballpark?
It's, it's several million dollars because of that compounding effect. If, if you just, so to speak, leave $1.5 million on the table, that becomes even greater than, it's not just 1.5 every year. It compounds year after year after year.
So it, it's safe to say as an example from our past, but informing decisions in the current environment of state funding being as inequitable as it is from Harrisburg, that as dire as this situation truly is and that we will tackle as a district, had those Act One increases and even that exception not been taken, we could tack another $7 million onto this right now. And I, I, I think that's what the public needs to understand as we're making these decisions for how we're going to fund what is already a very lean and mean operations at North Penn. I mean, in award-winning operations for how efficient and effective we are, and the public needs to know that.
So this is pretty dramatic. Again, this could be a good talking point with any legislator that might be discussing the possibility of a tax freeze. And you may have seen from the PSBA legislative alert last week that the property tax freeze is off the table right now, but all expectations are it will come up again prior to the state passing its budget by the end of June. No one likes taxes. I, I think no one will dispute that fact. I'd like to keep things in perspective. North Penn School District provides an amazing educational opportunity for students in the school district. North Penn has one of the lowest tax rates in Montgomery County. It's kind of the sweet spot of the school district's operations, low taxes, high opportunity, high student achievement for the students. high student achievement for the students, a great community in which to live. It's kind of the best of all worlds, that sweet spot I think North Penn is in now. But that does come at a cost. Public education is not free. Next slide, Kristen. So this scenario here shows, again, the V-shaped recovery with the variances. Act One increase every year, but next year uses the special education exception. So here in this scenario, the exception is only used one year. So, Mr. Costa, to your point, to show the compounding effect here now, the fund balance now ends up being fifty-two million dollars. It grows even more by having this scenario than obviously just having the Act One Index. Fifty-two million dollars in fund balance at the end of the twenty-thirty-one fiscal year. And even in that lean year, so to speak, twenty-twenty-five, that was the trough. In the other scenario, with just the Act One increase every year, I think we had a twelve-million-dollar reduction in fund balance. Here in this scenario, by taking the special education exception just one time, the fund balance is only lowered by three million dollars as opposed to twelve and thirteen million dollars under that other scenario. Dramatic impact. Okay, we're gonna move on now to the U-shaped recovery. So, a-again, this is very similar. The story to be told by each scenario is, is pretty much the same. The difference here in the U-shaped recovery, your fund balance at the end of twenty-thirty-one is gonna be less because the recovery takes longer. The downturn is an extra year compared to the V-shaped recovery. So here in this scenario on the screen now, this is an Act One increase every year. So our fund balance goes from thirty-six-point-seven million dollars down to roughly twenty-six-point-seven million dollars at the end of twenty-thirty-one. Here in our trough year, our trough year is pushed out by one year because we have an extra year of a recession. Our trough year now is in the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, and fund balance goes down to under twenty million dollars. So here in this scenario, the fund balance haircut is larger. The fund balance haircut here is almost seventeen million dollars compared to the V-shaped recovery where it was thirteen million dollars. U-shaped recovery, this one is very ugly. I'm sorry, Kristen, go to the one with the, that's it. This is the U-shaped recovery with no tax increase next year. This is, this is even worse than the V-shape. Again, the recession lasts an additional year, but the school district runs out of money in the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Goes to a negative, actually, actually goes into negative in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Goes into a negative three-and-a-half million dollars already in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. So you, you talk about a bond rating at that point in time, uh, our bond rating would be junk status, basically. We'd be paying the highest interest rates possible with a negative fund balance, if we can even get anyone to lend money to us at that point.
I, I think it's important to state, too, the possibility of this potential budget, only because the U is probably more likely than the V, and the pressure we're gonna get for people in the community to hold off on having a tax increase at all next year. So while this seems like worst-case scenario, this is still rosy-ish, um, assumptions by Mr. Scrocky and his team, as he indicated earlier on. And this is likely the kind of projection a lot of districts will be looking at, considering moving forward because of short-term political considerations or whatever else, but the truth is, the district, this is awful, and we should not be considering this.
Yeah, I think it's important that we need, we do need to learn from the lessons from the past recession. There's no question about it. And we know what trends were evident with tax collection, with earned income tax and property tax and realty transfer tax and interest income. And we're using all those lessons learned as part of those projections, part of these assumptions. Still being, we don't wanna be all doom and gloom. We're, we're still trying to paint somewhat of an optimistic picture here because I can tell you that compared to some of our peers with their projections, these could have been a lot worse. Hearing that our peers and neighboring districts are lowering their earned income tax for next year's budget by ten percent, I mean, that's pretty dramatic. That's very doom and gloom.
Are they basing that on projected unemployment, um, numbers that they're hearing coming out? Like, what is that assumption coming from?
Yes, based on projected unemployment.
Mr. Scrocky, what do you think? Again, um, when you sit back and you look at U, you look at V, you look at all this data, again, um, do you have some type of, um, projection that you think, that you think is reasonable, that is methodical, that is a balance between really a negative versus the optimism?
Yeah, I, I think we're kind of seeing that with the, uh, go back, Kristen, to the previous slide. I would say this one here, Ms. Wesley, is, this is the one I feel is the most realistic.
Okay.
Is the U-shaped recovery with our variances with an Act One Index, and that would be my fiscal recommendation, uh, for an Act One Index for the upcoming fiscal year. So I, I think this paints the most probable scenario, still with a wee bit of optimism built into it. I think this is the most likely scenario here, and I think what this does is, this still puts us on a pathway of fiscal sustainability.
Okay.
Something where the district can be in a really good position fiscally long after I'm gone, long after Dr. Dietrich is gone, uh, maybe even long after, uh, Kristen is gone, but...
You're not going anywhere, so stop that conversation.
Stop it. Stop it right now. So, so...
And that's, and that's what we're concerned with. We, we can't be looking at the budget in a one-year silo. We need to be looking at the budget for future years for long-term fiscal sustainability because regardless of who's manning the ship in future years, we certainly don't want to leave that individual a sinking ship. We wanna leave that individual with a, a situation where the double-A-one bond rating is still in place, where projects can still move forward. And that's where I would say, I, I realize that, we talked last week about that balancing act between being able to be responsive and sensitive to individuals that are struggling with the economic downturn, but also balancing the long-term fiscal viability for the school district and recognizing that, you know, for a very effective community, the school district is at the center of that community. And to have a school district at the center of a community, it, it needs to require and demand excellence. And, and I think North Penn is there. I think we do deliver excellence in our instructional program, and we need to deliver the same excellence in our fiscal program as well. And I, I just don't think having a zero percent tax increase is very prudent to get to that point. So...
Mr. Fusco, so I will defer to Mr. Fusco as the chair, and I will say, Mr. Scrocky, what you just said made total sense. And for, for, for me, I think that moving forward, that a, a base case, whatever that base case may be based upon your input, your analysis, would be my recommendation that we move forward with, and we move from that. Because up to this point, everything has been a moving target. And I think we all, as a board, as an administration, should move forward with something that is consistent, and then analyze the delta from that position.
May I make a comment, uh, Jared Fusco? Thank you. Uh, I, I find it interesting, and this is very helpful, seeing the, uh, Mr. Scrocky, what are a possible likely scenario might be. And on the, the other page, that would I consider the worst-case scenario, the following slide with the zero percent tax increase and a U-shape. Can I see those numbers again, please? I, I, what, what, what I'm, what amazes me looking at this, right? How do you get the public to understand all of these numbers? And what I'm, uh, what I'm distilling is that there's not a single one of these numbers in these scenarios that's red, blue, or independent. This is data. This is non-political. And when I look at, when we think about twenty-twenty-four, um, what the status of our budget could be, you know, a, a freeze from Harrisburg on local school taxes is a death sentence. And this is to a district that's well-positioned to, uh, weather this, th- this fiscal crisis. And I think anyone in the community that just looks at the numbers just has to realize, as much as we all hate taxes, that in order to, to, you know, maintain this proud district and its outcomes, I don't see, you know, what concerns me are political decisions based on thinking we have a V-shaped economy, not a U-shaped economy, uh, political decisions out of Harrisburg that freeze these local taxes and really cut off every local community's nose, right? Politicians in Harrisburg would be okay, but I want this on a postcard sent to every politician in Harrisburg that wants to freeze taxes. It's, it's just, uh, decimating to this school district. And I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure our community understands that, these numbers. Thank you very much for giving us the different projections.
And we still feel very strongly that we need to come up with other alternatives to provide support to our community. We talked about a couple of those last week. We talked about expansion of the installments. We talked about the possibility of expanding the rebate program. And we also talked about that there could be a, a legislative initiative to either expand the discount period for taxes or maybe extend the penalty period. I think all those are good as part of the, the balancing act. And again, I just would not put that zero percent as part of it.
I'd like to amplify what, um, Steve said about those things that I think would help, um, with the situation. I've been beating the drum loudly with all of my colleagues, uh, across the county that we need to have assistance from the state to, uh, remove some of the barriers that presently exist in my estimation for helping those in need. Namely, uh, we need to have legislation that would extend the time period. Presently, all taxes are to be collected by the tax collectors by December thirty-first. That means then that the penalty, uh, starts being assessed already on the first of November, and by the thirty-first of December, it becomes, uh, something that is up for, you know, collection. Um, and all those reconing measures begin then after December thirty-first. So I think it's important that we get that legislation that would give us the ability to expand the number of installments, um, into the two thousand twenty-one school, excuse me, two thousand twenty-one calendar year. Right now, we're constrained by having to have those all done prior to December thirty-first. If we could have the time period when penalty gets assessed, uh, extended, so that, you know, we wouldn't be getting to that as soon as we are under current constraints, that would be helpful also. So those things, uh, I believe, it's my understanding, we need to have state intervention so that we could do it uniformly, uh, across the entire county then, and establish different dates for those time periods. Instead of November first for when penalty comes in, if we could have that extended to perhaps February first. Instead of December thirty-first, when it gets turned over for collection, uh, we could have that be March thirty-first, for example. Those would be examples, uh, and then in addition to that, additional installments. Uh, I think that is more helpful to the people than any of the other measures that we've talked about.
Okay, Kristen, could we go just to the charts now, the actual, okay? So this graphically now, this, uh, line graph illustrates the, uh, the fund balance, what happens to the fund balance under those seven scenarios. So again, the, the, the first scenario was a preliminary budget with the variances, with the new debt. Uh, that provides the highest level of fund balance at the end of the projections. And then the declining fund balances, the bottom two lines, take us into net negative territory. So graphically, this represents those seven scenarios that we just discussed with the corresponding fund balances below. And we, we do have this posted in Board Docs, if you'd like to go back and take a look at this later. But graphically, this represents those scenarios that I just mentioned. Again, uh, just to restate, I, my opinion, the most likely scenario and, and the recommended scenario would be the, the U-shaped recovery utilizing the Act One Index for the upcoming year. It does include, it does include the new debt that we are projecting for future projects, and it also includes those end-of-year variances that we typically have. So Kristen, I think there's one more, right? Graphically, it shows, that's the graph just blown up a little bit more without numbers at the bottom. And then this one shows, each year, it shows the impact on the fund balance each year. That's, that's a busy chart. But again, these are posted in Board Doc. So if we go back to the other presentation now, Kristen, just a couple more final thoughts. So getting back now to where we're at with the budget right now, this budget scenario slide that we share. Our current deficit is thirteen million dollars. An Act One Index would generate four-point-seven-eight-six million dollars. Boy, we still didn't get any new retirements in since last week, so that's seven-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars in savings from anticipated retirements. We might need to give that a haircut. We have one-and-a-half million dollars in for budgetary reserve, so if that money is not touched at all, that could flow back to fund balance and then our potential positive variances. So looking at all these situations, that budget deficit, where could we be at the end of the year? We can end up with a deficit of three-point-two million dollars at the end of the year with an Act One increase. Uh, possibly a little bit higher because of the lack of retirements, but roughly around three million dollars. So that doesn't look as bad as it did last week because we, we pulled out the Chromebooks and making that purchase this year. But three million dollars is something that's fairly workable. You know, we had talked about some other things in the budget that potentially could come out. Some of the new staffing could still come out. That would get us closer to a, a possible, um, break-even point, in fact, at the end of the year.
Mr. Scrocky, so with the contracts, so this deficit includes the, um, NAP construction, correct?
Yes.
So is there any wiggle, even with the, uh, with, without compromising the fact that there are low bid and all the things that come with it? Is there any, um, flexibility with that?
With the timeline with the bid, you mean?
Yes.
Unfortunately, no. Um, it would mean sacrificing the project for a year.
Okay, fine. I, I, again, I, I don't wanna do that. But in terms of anything else, is there any, okay, so there's a number of things that there's, it's very structured, black and white. What are the items, possibly contracts, that there might be some negotiation that we could whittle down that three-point-two-three-six-million-dollar deficit?
Yeah, actually, there's a couple. Um, first off, we do have an expiring labor agreement with one of our associations that expires June thirty. So that's, you know, that's a significant amount of money, so that is open for negotiations. We have our Act Ninety-three agreement expires at the end of this fiscal year also. So, you know, my perspective of those is they are not fixed costs for next year. They're variable right now because they are open for discussion, uh, meet and discuss with the board with Act Ninety-three, and then collective bargaining for our support staff association. Also, we have, um, an RFP that just came due last week for occupational and physical therapy. That's a pretty large contract that comes in the, under the Special Education Department. Uh, so we got pricing, and we're gonna be doing interviews over the next week, and we'll have a recommendation to the board at the May meeting for the potential of a new OTPT provider. Uh, that contract is in excess of a million dollars, so that's another opportunity that perhaps might be able to, to shave money. Other areas, I'm a little concerned with that the needle might go in the wrong direction, though. I mentioned earlier about the talk about the state actually cutting our basic debt and special ed subsidy. So that would push the needle in another direction. The same, we wanted to kind of take a look at the earned income tax over the next month or so. We may need to lower that even further, the same with the realty transfer tax. So we do have, you know, opposite ends of the scale, you know, kind of pushing at each other right now. And perhaps it still brings us back to that three-point-two-million-dollar figures. We'll have some reductions in expend, in expenditures, but we'll have some reductions in revenues also. I don't see many increases in revenues at this point. I only see reductions in revenue. I don't see any increases in expenditures, though, either. I only see reductions in expenditures. The question is, which one will tip the scale, either, you know, increasing that three-point-two-million dollars or decreasing it? That remains to be seen over the next month.
So, so Mr. Scrocky, so I, I would say, you know, again, Mr. Fusco is the chair, but, and again, I'll defer to Mr. Fusco, but my thought would be, you know what? What can we challenge? What can we go after? Um, what can we negotiate at this point of the game so that that negative three-point-two-three-six million goes away?
Steve, could I just ask a quick question?
Yes. Yes.
Does the, um, does the amount here include the total ask from personnel or the part that we already kind of discussed and said that we were okay with? Because I think we had gotten that down to closer to like 1.8 million, I think, or 1.5. Tina probably has the exact number, but I'm just wondering, does it include the 3.8?
It, right now, for the staffing, there were 22 new positions that were included in the preliminary budget. I think it was about 1.7 million added to the budget, net of the state subsidy for retirement and social security. So right now, pending final review from personnel, from Personnel Committee, we have included in the budget.
The 1.7, okay.
All right. So I think we had discussed the personnel, maybe kind of ran out of time there. When we get back on again, we're going to kind of try to finalize that, but that number is slated to come down.
Okay. And then you were saying that what we don't know over the next month is the possible decrease, because I'm just thinking, our substitute expenses have to be way down, I mean, expenditures for substitutes and transportation, and I mean, we have to be getting some money back there. I mean, just in transportation alone, I mean, not talking salaries, of course, but, and substitutes that aren't our current employees, but maybe just like day-to-day subs.
That's going to provide a positive impact on the current year budget. It won't impact the numbers for next year unless we're, you know, between now and the final budget, we're aware of a further shutdown that may extend, you know, well into next school year. If we're aware of that, we'll actually lower our substitute cost for next year also. But that, those things you just mentioned, Mrs. G, that definitely is having a positive impact on this fiscal year. And that gave this ability to shift the Chromebook purchase from next year to this year.
So are there, I guess what I was getting at was, are there other, will there be other maybe opportunities for that, for us to do those things because we saved money for this year?
Yep, absolutely. That's a great question. We do think that there are more opportunities. In fact, we've been asking department leaders to identify those items that are in next year's budget, planned purchases for next year, that in an expeditious fashion, we could procure this fiscal year. Again, shift the money and take advantage of some of the substitute savings or the transportation contractor savings to move that money to provide some relief into next year's budget. Even though at the end of the day, it doesn't impact fund balance at all, it's just a shift from one year to the next, but it nonetheless does provide relief with what we're showing for next year's budget. So we think we have opportunity to do that. I think at this point in time, it could be maybe another $500,000 in purchases that we can make this year. And then depending on what happens with the final personnel recommendations, that could be, you know, another million dollars plus that could be shed from next year's budget. So the question is going to be, let's say we're able to pull out another 1.5 million in spending out of next year's budget, how much are we going to be further reducing our revenues? That's really the question. If we can reduce revenues less than 1.5 million, then our projected ending deficit gets reduced. That's really going to be the wild card over the next month, what information we learn from our earned income tax collection, from our state subsidies. So that 3.2 million dollar projected ending deficit, you know, it should go down. The question is, how much will go down?
Mr. Skrocky, I have a quick question, if I may, just two points of clarification, and I save to the end here. The borrowing that we do for the NAP project, that's legally bound to be for NAP only. We couldn't take those, one of those $10 million installments and send it anywhere else because of a, is that a state law or a federal law, Mr. Skrocky?
That's a, that's a great question, and we actually, when we did the bond documents, we indicated that the money was being borrowed for NAP or any other capital project deemed by the district. So that gives the board flexibility. That's an excellent question. So that money that we borrowed for NAP, that could be reallocated for other projects. We are not bound to use that money for NAP. So in our official statement, it does indicate NAP or any other project, and we always do that in our bond issues because many times at the end of the project, there's money left over, especially, you know, in scenarios where the money is borrowed all at once. Here, we're phasing it into three phases, but sometimes money is borrowed all at once, and the actual bids come in under what the estimates were, and you have money left over at the end of the project. The perfect example is at Patfield and Montgomery. We're going to have money left over in those projects, but we can now use that money for other capital projects, and we are. We've already reallocated some of that money for the stadium project, as an example.
Right.
For NAP, we could do the exact same thing because that's the way we had the legal documents drawn up.
And, and what I mean to say is because we noted that would be for construction, we can't take those funds and put it into staffing or any other purpose?
Not for staffing. That would have to be, it's restricted for capital projects.
Right. Thank you. My last question then is about the tax rebate. After we come to a decision and ultimately vote on it, I imagine that's for the 18th of June, is that correct, that vote?
That could happen as early as next month. The budget will be adopted in June, on June 18th, but if the board would like to consider expansion of the tax rebate program, that could happen at the May meeting.
And then after that vote, how long would it take for that expansion to apply to community members right now that are hoping to get the rebate done sooner than later?
So that would be effective July 1st, and it would be based on taxes that the individual paid in 2019.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, Kristen.
Mr. Skrocky, I got confused when Mr. McBain asked that question. So money can be moved to other projects or, did I miss something?
No, you didn't miss anything. It could be. So right now, we have, we borrowed $20 million for NAP. What we're paying right now, we're not paying any contractors yet. We're paying the architects, paying engineers and professionals and so forth. But let's say, for the sake of argument, we have 19 million unspent dollars for that. So we don't need 19 million today or tomorrow or even six months from now because we'll be paying contractors. You know, those payments won't even start probably until August or September for the contractor. So you could use some of that NAP money for, let's say, there's an emergency repair on a boiler that needs to be made, for example.
Okay, I get that. I get that.
Yeah, you could shift the money, but then you would have to then theoretically borrow more money then when you do your final NAP borrowing to cover the money.
So I want to be physically responsible here. So when I was on the call today, you know, we did contracts, one, two, three, we did three, and then we did asbestos. And then the general contractor was basically 13.2 million plus and minus, and then we had contracts two, contract three, um, and then contract five, and then asbestos. My concern is, is that, you know, all of that came out, whatever it was. So what is the checks and balance, you know, based upon that total and coming back to the board?
Ms. West, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question.
Okay, so I'm going back to Mr. McBain's question. So there's money allocated for NAP, correct?
Yes, we borrowed $20 million so far for NAP, and then we would have to do one more borrowing to cover the total cost of the project.
Okay, fine. So the cost of the project would include the general contractor, the plumbing, the HVAC, the electrical, and the asbestos, correct? What we heard today?
As the prime contracts, correct, or hard, hard construction costs.
Okay. When I totaled them, that was over $20 million, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So based upon Mr. McBain's question, I'm not clear on where we'd be moving money at that point.
Well, I think Mr. McBain's question was, could you use the NAP money for any other spending?
It was like a hypothetical, wasn't it? I don't think it was.
Again, you know, again, hypothetical, right, Mr. Fusco, but based upon, when I was on the bid call, there's no hypothetical there.
Not for the hard costs, no. No, you know you're going to need more than $20 million.
Correct.
Absolutely.
So, again, pushing back a little here, that the answer to the question is, we really do not have additional money to move around based upon, again, this renovation on NAP has been in the works well before I even came on board, and it is lean and mean because we have, you know, low bid. So to think that there would be extra money from it doesn't make sense because we all know change orders come into effect, and I'm very concerned, even though you all have a very great relationship with the primary, the only bidder on general construction, we're going to be okay.
Yeah, there's no extra money. I think the good example to go back to is if a boiler blows up and we need to replace a boiler, could we use a million dollars from the NAP proceeds for that boiler? The answer to that question is yes. What that, what that would mean then is when we do the third phase of our NAP borrowing, we would simply need to borrow a million dollars more than what we had planned.
Yeah, but you know what? I don't want to borrow a million dollars more. I don't want to.
I mean, we need to, we're talking about things that are what-ifs, maybes, I mean, we're.
You know what, Mr. Fusco? I'm with you, but at the end of the day, I don't want to have something.
I don't either. I don't think anybody here.
I know. Can I just say that I. Mr. Fusco, and whoever else is answering me, I get what Mr. Skrocky's saying.
Right, I just wanted to make the comment.
Really, really smart about our decisions.
I just wanted to make the comment that that's part of the reason we hired the construction management team, too, to keep the tight control on the contractors.
Agreed.
So, and we thought that would be money well spent to spend.
I, I think it's really, really money well spent, but I also think it's the responsibility of the board, going back to Mr. Snyder and Mr. Skrocky, to say, okay, you know what? We really, really need to be diligent and really granular about our review. That's all.
Okay, Kristen, and if you could advance from this one? So, okay, these are the tax scenarios. This is similar to what we had shared before. Let's go to the next one, Kristen, the next step. So now, again, that the fact that we're within a month of the proposed final budget adoption at this point, we have one finance committee meeting between now and the proposed final budget adoption. A couple of key things we need to finalize here for the next month. We just talked earlier about the staffing recommendations, and that should no question result in lowering our expenditures for next year. We also talked about the next bullet, removing items from the 2021 budget and purchasing this fiscal year. We'll continue to refine and update our data. It's incredible, the amount of new information that is coming in, both at the federal level with that CARES legislation, at the state level, the state budget, it's mind-boggling. Every day, there's new kernels of information. And I also mentioned about monitoring the earned income tax and the transfer tax because I do suspect that we're going to have to lower our budget in these two revenue items for next year. And then finally, at the, at the May finance meeting, I think it's, that's the point where kind of like a semi-final decision needs to be made with respect to the tax increase. So we will be looking for the committee for a recommendation or guidance with respect to how to populate our budget documents for the proposed final budget. Typically, the way it works is once the proposed final budget is passed, that's the tax rate we nine out of 10 times go with for the final budget. Now, the tax rate can change in between, but our philosophy has always been, you know, the public has an opportunity to review the budget documents. Making any kind of last-minute changes in that last month doesn't give the public a good opportunity to react to any changes, so we like to stick with whatever the proposed final budget tax increase is, to that also then be the recommendation for the final budget. So unless something drastic, some new information really necessitates consideration of a change, we would really like to keep to that number. So at that May finance meeting, we will be asking for your guidance. I think you heard my recommendation earlier. My recommendation would be an Act One index of 2.6% for the increase for the upcoming year, but we'll certainly support any recommendation that is made, and then we'll populate that into our budget documents so we can be ready for the proposed final budget adoption the following week.
Thank you very much for the great presentation, Mr. Skrocky and your team.
Thank you. Are there any other topics that we can address or any other iterations of multi-year projections that we can address for the May finance committee meeting that you'd like to see?
Mr. Skrocky, I'd just like to share with you some of what higher ed is doing, particularly Temple University. They're looking at effective May 10th, cutting some of the salaries of officers and people that report to the president by 10%, and also effective May 10th, cutting those who make up to $100,000 by 5%. And that's just doing that to help the deficit till they get through this fiscal year. Other recommendations might be forthcoming, which will impact other staff who make the lower rank, which they're trying not to touch, but higher ed is going through this same thing and looking at cutting their deficit in the best way that they can because they're, they're hurting big time, and that's what they're beginning to look at. Salaries, right now, it's just those in higher echelon, and then it could impact those lower. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just letting you know what's going on in the higher ed field.
Thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Skrocky, I think it's interesting, and I thank you for all the hard work you and the team have done in the administration and sharing these options and understanding where we're, you know, many ways flying without many of our instruments here. However, I want to also understand, right, with the exception, and I'm going off memory here, but for the special ed exception, it's about 1.5 million. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, and we touched base on this, I think, at the last meeting, but I think it's important as we continue to evolve, whatever our decision is, but, you know, from no tax increase and voting on that up to a tax increase plus this exception for special ed. I think it's very important that people realize that 1.5 represents just 1% increase. Am I correct then, based on what I've learned earlier, that, you know, the trend line over the last five-plus years is that special education funding is typically lagging conservatively 5% from Harrisburg, which means we, as a school district, pick up that 5% gap every year. So we're talking roughly $6 million, even if we took the 1% exception and the gap that's just structurally created due to that inequitable funding, that unfunded mandate. Is that, is my math correct there?
Absolutely.
So it's, it's amazing that as desperate as these times are, and with the projections we have, understanding that variance, what I think, yet again, it demonstrates that compound or that compounded revenue, what it really represents is what the state of Pennsylvania is in sharing with its, you know, equity, it's part of the educational bill that's due to our community. You know, if we had $6 million in our budget right now, even in some of these worst-case scenarios, this looks a lot different every year compounding. I just want to make sure that I highlight for my fellow board colleagues and those in the public as well, that now is the time, more than ever, if we just had reasonable cyber charter, uh, school reform, and charter, uh, school reform as proposed by Governor Wolf, we would see $800,000 immediately in our register for the next fiscal year. And it just amazes me and exposes the hypocrisy of those in Harrisburg who want fiscal responsibility. And I, I'm fine with school choice, but now, more than ever, we need to watch where every penny is going. And I, I can't believe if the legislature looks the other way and doesn't take this opportunity to keep local dollars within local districts. These millions of dollars add up really quickly, and it's a shame that the burden falls solely on, you know, our community to pay for, for these differences.
You know, to that point, I can't stop thinking about, just a few months back, we were talking about replacing local revenue for the districts with state and income and sales tax. Can you imagine what we'd be looking at right now if that had moved forward with the deficits that the state is running from income alone? I mean, goodness, we dodged that bullet. And we must continue to dodge that bullet, because we do not want the state controlling our budgets.
Dr. Dietrich and Mr. Scrocky, one of the things I want to commend or attend on specifically is the fact that you both adamantly, as you know, Dr. Dietrich said, kind of sound the alarm and are constantly advocating for school funding, and talking to your colleagues and cohorts about how they need to be rallying, and, you know, talking to legislators, their legislators. And because this is like, I mean, I, there's just, it's like looking down a dark hole. Um, you know, Mr. Scrocky, I was thinking to myself, can you please stop using words like "flatline"? But, you know, that is, it is what it feels like, in a sense. And, you know, flatline, no growth, you know, there's kind of a theme to this. And I, I just, I, I do appreciate that you both continue to advocate for public schools and school funding. And I do think that we are doing what we can to not just blindly look at what we're, you know, what we're facing, and to try to make good decisions and have, um, strong discourse around where can we be conservative within the budget, and what do we really need, and what do we want? And I think we're doing that, and I see the administration is doing that as well. So, thank you both for that advocacy on our behalf.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. We definitely cannot just jump and be reactive and, you know, operate in the absence of good data. So, I do commend Steve and Kristen for their work in putting together those scenarios. It's something that Steve and I have been talking a lot about, that we can model some things and look at different data points and make an informed decision. So, that's critically important for a school board, and we're hopeful that the data we put together for tonight is, is useful to you, and useful for the community to understand. These are very large decisions that have tremendous impact beyond just one year. Because of that compounding, it has just a ripple effect that just continues for multiple years. So, thank, thank you for those words, and we're going to keep on trying to give good information to the board and to the community to make the right decision moving forward. Likewise, we're sharing the same information with our legislators, and hoping that they also make the right decisions too, moving forward.
All right, are we ready to move on? Is JoJo here?
Well, actually, JoJo couldn't make it. If you look under the executive content in Board Docs, he emailed me this afternoon, and he had some good news to share, and that's the reason why he wasn't able to make the meeting tonight. He did get appointed on the Executive Board for High School Democrats of Pennsylvania, and he had a Zoom meeting tonight, so.
Well, good for him.
We can congratulate him, he said he'll be on our Zoom meeting at, at the May meeting.
All right, great, forward to hearing from him then. Uh, Mr. Gilmore, do we have another opportunity for anybody interested to speak to the committee?
Uh, there are no hands currently raised. This would be the time, folks, if you want to raise your hand to make any comment in the public input part of the session. There are about six people on. Uh, I thought I saw a hand there. Yes, Mr. Patchell has raised his hand. Mr. Patchell, your mic is open, and if you unmute yourself, you can address the board. Try this again.
You know, one day it's time back.
Yeah, that's all right, there we go, try it now, Mr. Patchell. It says talking permitted, so, your mic is still showing muted. You have, you have to unmute yourself there, Mr. Patchell.
How's that?
There you go.
Hey, thank you, you know, I, I know it there's too, but, you know, the V-shaped recovery we talked about does not even include 300 million people retiring every single month. What's that going to do to your earned income tax? I think it might be a pretty dreary sight, okay? France has extended their lockdown to May 11th. They keep extending it because they know it would be imprudent to bring people back and have a second wave. The cost of, of, the cost of the medical, I see people rolling out of the hospital. They never tell you about the bill that's going to be in a mailbox about two months from now from Blue Cross. You owe $200,000, oh, you don't have medical, or you lost it at work? Oh, that's too bad, okay? To talk about a tax increase, 2.6, 3.4, shame on you. I bet there isn't one person on this board that has gone down and seen a food line in a distribution line, man, on Main Street. Has anybody gone down there and seen the number of people? They wouldn't be standing in line for free handouts, because they, they have a lot of money in the bank. I bet everybody on this board is working steady, getting a check, they're not standing around. I know you make over $100,000, so, you know, to be passing judgment on, oh, that'll be just fine. I don't think that will be just fine, okay? We spent $2 trillion in Afghanistan in 19 years. Gee, within two months, we spent the same amount of money. Where are they getting that money from? They're printing it, they're printing it, we're all going to pay for it, okay? I have to bring a date back in history, November 15th, 1965. You know what that was? That was the Battle of the Idrang Valley, where the, where the greatest nation in the world brought the finest military hardware to bear on a people that wanted to throw us out of that country. And you know how that wound up? We were barely lucky to get out of there, and it was a horrific loss to the, to the US Army. And for another 10 years, it dragged on and on and on and on. Your budget sounds like this is the Idrang Valley, and it's going to go on and on and on. How dare you raise taxes? We don't know, you, you shouldn't even bring any people back into the high school until they, until they develop a vaccine. How dare you, how are you going to have a football stadium filled with people that you don't know if they're, if they're, if they can get it or not get it? You're going to have to cancel all sports. How's that going to work? You know what? You may never get, get to use Crawford Field, because you know what? They're going to delete all these things, and you're going to go back to your roots of academics, academics. And you know what? I called Todd Stevens. You need to ban in the high school and keep everybody online, so when they get to the college that they can't afford anymore, and they're doing it online, they'll be really good at it. So, that's all I have to say, I got nine, eight, seven, six, okay? Here's what they say in the army, broken arrow, broken arrow, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Is there anybody else wishing?
Um, any other folks that want to speak tonight? It looks like from the, the group that's in here tonight, that would be it. I think that's it for public comment tonight.
Okay, um, in that case, there are no items to be moved to action to review, correct?
We, we do have, not necessarily recommendation from this committee, but just as a matter of practice with a bid timing, we will have the bids on for the intent to award bids for the Nap Elementary School project for Thursday night.
Okay, great. Any other board comments at this time? Community comments, all right, motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All right, we're done. All right, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, see you Thursday night.
See you Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.